Just coming to.
All right, so we'll get it's six thirty by my clock, so we'll get started. Welcome to the planning board meeting for November two, twenty twenty-two. We'll start with the alphabetical roll call of who's here.
Mark.
Mark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Evan Heine present.
Okay, I'm sure Deirdre will join us is Andrew with us tonight also is Laura Lindor, town planner. Is Angela out there taking attendance or minutes?
She will be, she's having trouble getting in, but I'm helping her.
Okay, and I see Deirdre's in the attendee list.
Thank you.
So. All right, so. Aren't you?
Oh, sorry, never mind.
Attorney Watzke's not here yet. I was told he was coming.
I I don't see Attorney Watzke yet, but.
We'll we'll give him a few minutes and we'll 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 go out of order with what we're doing here tonight, so. And Deirdre Hobson is here, welcome to you. Knew you couldn't miss the fun, so. All right, so we'll we'll start then with. Five thirty-four Beechwood Street and thirty-two Dome Street, we just have a draft decision to go over and vote to approve. Has everybody had a chance to look at it?
Tom, I only sent it to you, actually. I can live share it to me.
All right, if you want to put it up on the screen, it's not very long, so I think we can get through it fairly quickly.
Yes.
Oh, Chris Plex is out there, too. Got his hand raised. Let's bring him in. There he is, good, we have Chris Plex with us tonight as well, welcome, Chris. All right, so do you have the, can you read, bring the draft up, or shall I do it?
Yes, no, sorry, I I'd been in a different window trying to help Angela access the meeting, so I just had to backtrack, so thanks for your patience, it's opening now. So. I'm just having trouble opening the document. Tom, you might want to move on to the next item, you Attorney Watzke is not here, but the rest of the team is.
All right, all right, all right, we are just, just. Hold on one second. All right, let me. Get back here, sure screen. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, there there's the there's the draft decision. All right, so now. Let me minimize my screen, that's to go page down. The the beginning of it is the usual where the vote is, the information about the project. Just go right to the findings. With findings, we just have two basic findings here that a land alteration special permit was not needed. And then that the project is consistent with the rules of site plan review. And it goes through the six factors of site site plan review. Take a look at that, does anything jump out at anybody? I didn't see anything that was problematic with that. You know, ultimately, on number six, we are making the decision that vehicular and pedestrian traffic is safe and convenient at the moment. But there is a condition further on here about the future, whether that might change. Anybody with any comment on the findings?
Not yet.
Anyone, or should we move on?
Yeah, you can, you can move on.
All right, good, thank you, Clark. So the conditions, there's only three here. I didn't think this was a cut project, I've had a lot of conditions, but the first is a fairly standard one about having. Obtaining the necessary permits from other town boards and committees, and if there's any alteration to come back to the board. Determine whether a modification is needed. The decision has to be kept on site. And then the third one was, let me discuss quite a bit at the end of the hearing. About a future traffic study, since this is a completely new use for the site. Within twenty-four months of the issuance of certificates of occupancy, so that is a mandatory requirement, it says shall, so. It is something that that we will then revisit in twenty-four months to see if any further modifications to the plan is required. Were there any other conditions that anybody recalls from the meeting that they'd like to see and hear? Again, I think the rest of the project was fairly straightforward. All right, so I'll just go around, I'll start, I'll start with Amy tonight. And then we'll just go through the board, is there any other specific conditions that you'd like to see?
I just want to make sure that the language of the item three represents the. An understanding of the applicant, and what I mean is, it says applicant shall submit to the building department a status report on traffic patterns following twenty-four months. Of issuance of certificate certificates of occupancy. Is that sufficiently clear to indicate that they will be able to operate for twenty-four months prior to them coming back to? Make any comment to us, I would think as an applicant, I would like to know that I had. You know, they could, it could take them three years to do their project, so how do we create this on a contingent basis?
Well, it's that's why it's tied to the certificates of occupancy, so if they, you know, take their time and. Doing the construction of this project, you know, nothing that's going to generate traffic. Other than during the period of construction is going to occur until they have occupancy, so. It's sufficiently clear to me, but if it needs some clarity, feel free to suggest it, but I. You know, that's the the trigger, the start period for this twenty-four months of of review is. This is the issuance of the occupancy permits.
I might add, if this is a mixed-use project, which my understanding is it is mixed use for purpose of residency in part of the building. And also for the operation of a business. The concern was raised with regard to the traffic patterns that would flow in and out of this site. During the course of normal business. My concern with the way things are written is. Twenty-four months after issue issuance of certificates of occupancy. If the places receives a certificate of occupancy for. A residence. That does not. That's not going to look at the need for this as envisioned, based on twenty-four months of review of operation of the. Business establishment.
Lauren, rather than me editing here, if you just take make a note about this. Say the issuance of certificates of occupancy for the commercial uses. Does that address that, Kevin? I think that's what you were getting at, that the real traffic.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Generators of the commercial uses, not not the residential use.
Well, that's exactly it, and just, you know, I'd like, I'd like someone can point out, too, you get a certificate of occupancy. Say in month one, and then twenty-four months go by and you're still not occup- performing it as a business. I I don't want that to become a loophole, and we know there's projects that have the go-ahead in this town that have gone and dragged on for periods of time along. Into months, the amount of months we're talking about. Now, if the certificate of occupancy means you have to occupy it and start that business for it to come into effect within a certain amount of time after it's issued, then. I'm okay with that's the clarification, the way it's written, but I don't want a certificate of occupancy for a business. And then find out twenty-four months later, traffic looks good, and there's no basis upon which it's. A real-time basis upon which we have data to see how it's operated over any amount of time, twenty-four months or even some fraction of.
Okay. I mean, yeah, the the issuance of the certificate of occupancy just gives you the right to occupy, doesn't mean there might be actual occupancy, they might have. A delay in getting a tenant if they're leasing this out. You know, there is, there is a possibility that the issue, that certificate of occupancy can be issued, and then they have less than twenty-four months of data for actual use, but they'll still be triggered. At month twenty-four of generating some sort of report, and then the building inspector in this board is going to have to evaluate what to do with that data. But if we if we qualify it, that's certificate of occupancies for the commercial uses only, that means. The apartment could be used and go on for quite some time and be the only use there, and there won't be any requirement to. Update on traffic patterns, but I don't think that's, again, where our concern is, what's going to generate traffic.
Well, then I think something needs to be added, that certificate of occupancy for the business portion of this permit and the. A set amount of time for continuous operation of the business prior to. Review by the by this board of traffic flow patterns over that period of time.
Okay, so let me. Put it to another color, so I can. See it. Oh, you're also sitting right now. I mean, the the idea, I don't know, is the idea to. Push off of them having to report until they have meaningful data or to keep the twenty-four months trigger, no matter what data they have.
I'd rather see something meaningful, and I'm sure the applicant would as well, based on seasonal fluctuations in their business. Based on the fact that most businesses after twelve months of operation may not be in operation thereafter. I think twenty-four months of continuous or near continuous operation of the establishment after certificate of occupancy is reasonable.
Keep the twenty-four month window, so not going off and losing them into the future, would this look okay? That they have at least eighteen months of actual use data?
Yeah, occupancy and business use.
Okay. Does that look good to everybody?
Yeah, I, you know, I was going to make a comment on the on the 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 first line, the status report. And then following twenty-four months, it seems like applicant and the billing department. Should they submit a report on? A vehicle and pedestrian traffic patterns? A report to the planning board? Why is it to the billing department? Fill to the billing apartment and the planning board a report on.
Font color again, sorry.
No worries.
I shouldn't just be using the.
Yes, and get rid of the word status. It would be a report on. On that and and instead of following, should it be, should it be after twenty-four months of issuance? I think that's a little, a little clear.
Yep.
Along with Kevin's additional.
Okay, good, all right. We we've jumped around, anybody else have any other comments on this or? On this particular one? Okay, I'll save this, Lauren, and I'll get it to you tomorrow. Any other thoughts, comments on conditions? I personally didn't think there were any more that would be necessary, but.
If it was to come to be that there was a traffic study that needed to be done. It's relevant for us to say, upon the determination of this. Eighteen-month period of actual occupancy and use of commercial spaces. There there is a need identified for a traffic study, that traffic study should commence within the next thirty days.
Okay, I mean, we could decide that at the time, or we can decide that now.
I, you know, we are going to forget, so I think it's better to just write it down.
And I guess adding who is responsible for, just being clear that it would be the building occupant, the building applicant in this case. To prepare and submit that report.
Yeah, well, the applicant. It's possible, like one pleasant street, that who we are giving the permit to may sell the property between now and then.
Right.
That's why I wanted to say the successor, and it's whoever's going to own the property at the time that the burden's going to go on, so. All right, anything else from anyone?
Not me.
All right, and I'll entertain a motion to approve this decision.
So move.
Has edited.
Second.
All right, roll call alphabetical.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobson, I.
Chris Plex, I.
Okay, I gotta just find a place to say that, I'll do that later. Okay, great, thank you very much, all right, so. That's taken care of, what do we have over on attendees? Matt Watzke is here, so if you wouldn't mind promoting Matt Watzke, we do not have to promote their whole team. So our next my item is ninety-four Black Horse Lane, where we have a continued common driveway application. And just to bring everybody up to speed, so we have continued this matter a couple of times. There was a request being made to continue it once again this evening. I don't know how many of you saw Matt's. Email regarding that. But if I can, I'll just read it quickly first regarding the common driveway application, as the board is aware, subsequent to our filing. We have filed building permits with the building inspector for seeking approval for construction of three houses on each of the three existing vacant lots that are entitled to the single lot exemption under zoning. We are waiting the building inspectors ruling on those applications, if those permits are approved, we would not go forward with the pending common driveway application. We request therefore to continue the common driveway meeting to the board's December meeting. By which time we anticipate having the buildings inspectors ruling on the permits. Second, with regard to the previously filed preliminary subdivision application. We filed it primarily to have the benefit of the zoning freeze that comes. From a preliminary followed by a definitive plan. You, meaning Lauren, had written to Carmen October thirty-first, that the board had closed its hearing on the proposed modifications of the common driveway rules. With no pending amendments to the zoning bylaw, and no pending amendments to rules and regulations. We have no need to further pursue the definitive subdivision, and will not be filing that plan at this time. So we had that request under that email for another continuation. I know that town council has spoken to Attorney Watzke tonight, today. I've spoken to town council and. You know, in the end of the day, we we all know that town council has issued an opinion. Regarding the issue of the single lot exemption and regarding whether. Any of these lots, even if subject to a building permit, can be subject to a common driveway, so. You know, the the advice I was given was, you know, we shouldn't continue this because we're tired of this being continued down the road, but ultimately. Even if building permits are issued, and we, nobody knows what's going to happen there at this point. How are these projects going to be built? Maybe you can answer that, Matt, but you know, our our counsel's opinion is that our hands are kind of tied, that we cannot. Approve any use of a common driveway with respect to this project. There's obviously a disagreement of legal opinions on what your rights are here, but you know, we're we're. We're bound by, you know, we're bound or guided by our opinion of town council, and so, you know, the question is. You know, do do we continue the common driveway to? I think what might be an inevitable finding that we have no choice but to deny it, or or. Or what what what's going on? If you if you were to get building permits, what do you, how do you plan to access these properties, I guess is the question.
Okay, well, if we get the building permits. We will access the properties the way they were intended to be accessed when they were created. Back in the nineteen thirties, which is via the the easements that run to these properties, and it would not be under a common driveway permit. Would use the existing right-of-way that the planning board not that long ago issued A and R approvals for. For lots fronting on it, and then have driveways coming off of that, neither of which would serve. Three or more houses, they would only serve one house or two houses at most, so they would not be common driveways by definition. But that will be, you know, the access and whether that is illegal access is a zoning issue that is. Presented to the building inspector for him to rule on as part of our building permit applications to him.
Well, I mean, you're you're aware that our town council's opinion also questions your entitlement to use these lots under the single lot exemption.
No, no, she didn't, actually, her her only, she she in fact actually agreed with me that the that the 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 three vacant lots in question. Are eligible for the single lot exemption, the only one that she questioned was the one that has a house on it already and that had additional land added to it. And that 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 lot, which is the one in ninety-four Black Horse. The the single lot exemption is is irrelevant to that one. Because it has a house on it, a single lot exemption is only applicable to vacant lots. So that that house was never going to be part of a common driveway application, it already has a house and access.
All right, well. To the board, town council couldn't be here tonight because of a conflict she had with another community that had a more pressing issue than even this one. I I was joking with her about which was the more pressing issue, but. You know. I I think. You know, this is what we call in the law, reasonable minds can differ, Matt, I I have a completely different interpretation of how you read her. Her comments about the single lot exemption. So I'm going to leave it to the board to decide, I'm I'm not going to try to sway anybody one way or the other, we either continue this and we'll. Come to the same discussion in a couple of weeks with town council present. Or, you know, again, my my conclusion is that we have no, you know, we, right now, we have a common driveway application in front of us, that's all we have in front of us. And I don't think we have much choice about what to do with that under under council's opinion, but. I'll leave it to the board, is what the board would like to do tonight, and to either accept the continuance, and we'll discuss this further or. Or 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 put an end to it now, but that's that's the choice before us.
But I think it would be reasonable to have town council weigh in to to the board and inform the board as to what their findings were. Relative to the application, so I get, I would be for continuing.
What night did we have in mind for a continuance, Lauren?
Our first meeting in December is December seventh.
December seventh. Are you going to be available, Matt?
I'm checking my calendar right now.
That's the day that will live in infamy.
Yes, yes, I was thinking that myself.
Yeah, you don't want to schedule any hearings for for a day that will live in infamy.
Is your Wednesday night, is your Wednesday night calendar that full, Matt?
Just have to, I just have to check to see where I am in December, and it's taking me a moment to pull it up. December seventh is available that evening.
Anybody else want to weigh in on on our course of action here?
I concur with Mr. Brewer in. Appreciating the opportunity to hear from town council about the situation.
And if all the board members haven't, please read her opinion that was back from. What day was it? June twenty-one, twenty twenty-two regarding this matter, so everybody should refresh their mind. Kevin, Deirdre, Chris, anybody want to weigh in, you want to continue it for two weeks?
I will, I will just say that I feel like Carolyn gave us her opinion, we heard it in May. And I still stand with what she has said to us, so. I will do what the majority of the board feels is appropriate at this time, but that's where I stand.
Yeah, okay, no, and I don't disagree with that, as I said, I think her opinion. Ties our hands on what we're going, what we're able to do here, but. I don't, I don't mind putting this off for two more, you know, a couple more weeks, if that's the pleasure, so. Chris or Kevin?
You're on mute, so I'll go. Dear John, I'm in the same place, it seems like we know what town council's opinion is, and we're a bit bound by that, but I'm happy to put that off for two weeks if if that suits folks, sorry, Kevin.
No, no, no problem, Chris, I I recall what town council weighed in on to this board. At a prior meeting and on the basis of hearing that, and the basis of the time spent listening to that, and the basis of time. Spent weighing the options on that, I'm disinclined to push this to December seventh. But I I leave it to others to to put forth how they want to move on this.
You know, by December seventh, I I presume we have to have a decision on the building inspector about those permit applications by then. What what is, what if he denies the permits, what's your plan? You have in that email what you'll do if he allows the permits, but what if he denies them, what's your plan on them?
You see.
I think it's fair, it's fair for us to know that, so we know.
Sure, I understand. What we do would depend on the basis of the denial, if the denial is based on an interpretation of zoning. We would evaluate that and consider whether to exercise our right to appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Which has issued a number of different rulings on single lot exemption lot cases. So.
All right, well, a number of issues will finally be brought to a head by the seventh.
Right, yes, we 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 will know, we will know with much more certainty what's going to happen by that time.
Okay. All right, so the the overall consensus seems to be to continue, so can I entertain a motion to continue? Okay, okay, um all right, so the the overall consensus seems to be to continue, so can I entertain a motion to continue this to December seventh at six thirty?
Um do we have certainty Carolyn is available on December seventh?
No, we don't have that certainty, but we never do, so we'll we'll just make sure it happens. She could have sent somebody tonight, but. It would be difficult for another attorney, even her own firm, to weigh in on something she wrote, so I we'll we'll make sure she's there. You know, but i- if not, I'll make sure we have some definitive. To the extent that we don't already, we'll we'll some definitive direction. Again, we'll also know what. Our posture is with respect to the building permits uh application, so. Uh we'll make sure she's there. Um yes.
I just want to add a point of information. This isn't actually an advertised public hearing. This is just an application discussion, so if for some reason Carolyn's not available on the seventh. We have a meeting on the fourteenth and we can do it following.
That would work and and I I would, I would be collegial with my fellow counsel and accommodate her schedule.
Which is why you were reached out to today because I didn't want to make a decision here without you having the opportunity to hear it one, you know, depending on which direction we wanted to go, so. All right, so uh did somebody make that motion?
Yeah, I made the motion.
All right, second someone?
My second.
Okay, uh roll call Clark?
Mark Brewer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Geardra Hobson, I.
Chris Plank, I.
We'll see you on the seventh. Whether you're the first thing up kind of depends on what else comes in our agenda, but you know. I I expect that, you know, we're gonna put aside more than fifteen minutes for this like we did tonight. But you know, we'll probably get into a media discussion on the seventh, so. Um let's plan for that, okay? Yeah, thanks for being here, Matt.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is fifty five South Main Street. Our continued hearing under the uh Village Business District's Special Permanent Site Plan Review. So we'll promote who needs to be promoted.
Tom, is the plan to hear any uh new material from the applicant and then um get a a a an update from our peer reviewer?
Well, this is, you know, I was gonna bring everybody up to date on where we are, so.
Yeah.
The our our peer review uh submitted a detailed report on, I think it's dated September twenty sixth. That covered all all the issues about it. There was a re- a response from the applicant.
Twenty sixth.
No, but there was one they issued in September and then there was a risk, right? No, that was on like all the issues and then. The applicant has responded as far as I can tell and I checked our. But what's filed in our, you know, our active application thing on our website tonight. Uh just responded to the traffic section and now Weston Sampson has issued a subsequent. Comment to that. So what we have tonight that's only been fully backed and forth between the two uh uh experts is the traffic issues and not. Some of the other issues that Weston and Sampson raised on September twenty sixth. Weston and Sampson's uh retainer on this has run out and uh the applicant needs to come up with a sum of money. To get them back on track and that's possibly the explanation for why we don't have all of the uh. Responses, but what we. You know, and I I mentioned this to attorney Danny to give just a heads up about tonight and. And attorney Danny, you mentioned to me that you thought everything from the September twenty six peer review was. Responded to, but I'm not seeing that. At least it's not on our web webpage and then. You know, subsequently, we also got a memo that I think everybody has seen in the last couple of days from attorney Danahy regarding. Uh the height issue. So for tonight, and then I understand that. Uh the applicant has spoken further with our affordable housing committee, so. Tonight, we can certainly address the back and forth on the traffic issues. The 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 issues that are raised and what further action from the applicant might be needed are fairly limited. We can, I'd like to see if we can resolve the height issue once and for all. And if there is some offered resolution to the affordable housing issue, we can entertain that. But with respect to all the other things that Weston and Sampson raised in their memo of September twenty six. Other than the issue of traffic. We don't seem to have the full back and forth between them. And the applicants engineers at this point, so we we're not gonna finish this tonight, but I think we can address. Quite a few issues and try to put some issues to bed in one way or another.
Mister Chair, may I, I mentioned, um I actually need to ask this of the planner and her assistant. On October fifth, because you had indicated at our last hearing that you wanted a response by October fifth. I personally hand delivered both my letter, which was about fifteen pages, actually fifteen pages long with all of the responses. To the peer review for Weston and Sampson, as well as some backup attachment one and attachment two. Simultaneously, I I dropped off six full plans. Um which were also submitted in addition to my letter, which I understand that maybe some of your board members just received. I need to know what happened to that letter because that was in response and should have been shared with. Weston and Sampson because I was not looking for any further delay. Uh we were very prompt, so I I have to ask uh Ms. Lynn, Kristen Cassandra, what happened? Cause literally I personally dropped them off.
All right, well, hold on, John. I I mean, I looked at our. The filings that we have on our website and there is a fifteen page document that was October four. It came from. Whoever the company.
Yeah, that was an email that Cassandra asked me.
Yeah, Howard Stein Hudson, okay, so it's a fifteen page document, has some attachments, but as I look.
You're breaking up, you're breaking up.
Uh as I look at that document that Howard Stein Hudson's dated October fourth, that's simply addressing the traffic issues. And this is within Weston Sampson has further responded to on October twenty six. I still don't see anywhere that we've had a comprehensive response to all of the items. The the other non-traffic items on the September twenty six Weston and Sampson memo. And that's where there's some disconnect.
I just want to get the disconnect fixed because right after I dropped them off, I received an email from Cassandra saying. Could I, in addition, can I drop off the attachments that were part of my letter, which I sent to her on October fifth at seven. Twenty P M. And so the letter was sent. It was personally dropped off by me and I'm not. I'm just a little dismayed because I'm finding myself the day of.
If I could, could I interrupt, please? It is on the website, the October fifth letter is on the website. It was emailed out as an attachment. It was, we distributed it when we received it. I'm not sure what happened with the initial website. There was some. Problem with our employee internet that day that did not publish the documents that were uploaded on the back end, so. Again, I am discovering that there was a problem on that end. However, it was emailed around and it is available on the website. It has been given to Weston and Sampson. And we do have a letter from attorney Danny that he did deliver on the fifth, so there is that letter. Um when I spoke with Weston and Sampson today, they confirmed that they had received the letter. They don't, they will. In the additional scope of peer review that we need to replenish to complete. An additional piece of this, they will address those points. What they did do in the meantime is the traffic component, which they did have.
All right, let let me be clear that what I saw on my website today is John's letter of October fifth. Regarding the issue of height only. And the October fourth letter from Howard Stein Hudson, which addresses traffic only. I am not seeing that there is something else that responds to the other points in the. Rested in Sampson September twenty six memo. If that's there, you know, if that has been submitted. We we just need to circulate it and post it up there, that's all. I'm just. I'm not seeing that, but. In any event. You know, we we we're sitting here tonight without the back and forth on those other issues, so let's let's go forward with the, you know, I'm suggesting we go. Forward with the issues we can go forward on and put some things to bed that we can put to bed. And the Weston and Sampson review money needs to be replenished and we can go on from there.
I just for the board's benefit, um my understanding that we did send a check, I think for thirty four hundred or something. Uh and if there's still more money to be had or to be sent, we'll have that out. I know that when we found out earlier this week. Monday, um that's when we were sending a check, so we'll make sure that Weston and Sampson is are paid. Don't want that to be a reason not saying it is for any further delay. We'll make sure they they'll get paid.
All right, all right. All right, so uh with the board, is that your pleasure? Let's go ahead with what we can go ahead with and try to cover some ground tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so the issue of height, let's try to put this to bed. Mister Danny is given. What is it? Seven pages memo, a six page memo on this. You know, he's, I I understand what Weston and Sampson has said about it. My, you know, I'm gonna leave this to the board's thoughts. You know, this isn't about, you know, much of this memo is about my comments and I realize I've been verbal about it, so. You know, I'm gonna get responded to, but this isn't about. The flaws in the bylaw driving my decision here. It is, to me, common sense. The changes in the bylaw are to eliminate. The changes in the the proposed changes to the definition are to clarify where you measure from the bottom. Which came up as an issue on a project within the last year and a half. Uh it is to take out what a lot many people think is the illogic of the midpoint to a sloped roof. Um and perhaps with respect to things like a man's hard roof is to state the obvious that isn't apparently obvious to everyone. But with respect to this roof, I'm driven by the fact of just common sense that this is not a sloped roof. Generally, you know, at least in my general understanding of what a sloped roof is. A sloped roof to me is a pitched roof that comes to a point like this. Um it is not what we have before. What we have, what we have before is is a. To me, more of a decorative slope. On the front of a flat roof. And John, you mentioned in your thing about, you know, on the slope roof. The the measurement starts, you know, with a habitable space or you said that the roof plate, I believe, was the term you use. I mean, all buildings are a square box or a rectangular box and there's. There's a top that's flat, that's gonna be the ceiling of the last floor and the and the roof, and then you either put a. Pitched roof on it or you keep a flat roof on it and you might put. You know, some other decorative elements where you have a man's hard roof or a gambrel roof. But the box is still there and if I understand this correctly. The box here is higher than thirty five feet. Yeah, you said being one half of the distance from the plate line, which is the top horizontal line of a building. Wall upon which the roof rests. Well, the building wall to me is. It is going up above here. It's going beyond this man side. The man side's just, you know, this little slope, gable, whatever you want to call it, is just. Hovering it up, but where is the top plate? Where is that plate line in this building? To me, it's higher than thirty five feet. And I'd love to see, and I understand what you're dealing with, with the. The uh the brick coming through there and having to have a higher first floor. I get all of that, but I just don't. My own view, we can't deviate from. What the bylaw tells us as much as we want to see a project go forward and think it's an improvement over what's there today. So I I mean, I'm still stuck on that and it's it's not about. That this is ambiguous to me. I think it's plain common sense of what a sloped roof is and this is not that. In my view, so just my my opinion. I'll I'll go around the room. I'll start with Amy last time. Let me start with uh Kevin.
Um I would ask the applicant to post for us to see in front of us a horizontal line, which is their interpretation. Of the height of this roof from the. Reference point on the ground in front of the building. I I I would ask the applicant if it's available to provide that to us right now in real time. So we can see what they are saying is their measurement and the height of it off of a reference point. I want to see this next to the building. However, it's called, whatever type of style it is, whatever they're calling sloped and we're calling flat or other people somewhere land in between. I'd like to see that from the applicant um as we discussed.
Do we have, do we have that available, John?
I I'd have to ask.
That would be helpful.
Uh Ted Tulukian to see if he can uh locate if there's a side profile. The reference as a point, you know, between the structure, ground floor or grade rather to the um. To the roof roof bridge.
We have, we have a section that we can uh show on the screen if we can share the screen.
Yeah, go go ahead, please. I think that would be helpful to the discussion to visualize this, but.
Hey, so this is a section through the building. Ted, we have, I'm just blowing it up so you can see the dimensions.
We don't see it yet.
We haven't seen it yet.
Let me go back to.
We can see a big, a big blue flower.
All right.
I'm gonna say it looks like ribbon candy.
Yep, one second. We gotta do screen two. No, it's screen two. All right, can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. So. The question was from Kevin, correct, about where the line is from the building height. Our mean grade. Is approximately nine and five eighths of an inch above uh. This grade number that we have here. So basically, if we took the midpoint of the roof. It's about thirty two foot nine to the midpoint of the sloped roof. And if you take it to grade elevation and and add an extra nine inches, you're about thirty two feet. To the midpoint of the slope proof.
Okay, that that's most helpful. Um I'm not gonna buy that that's to the midpoint of a slope roof when I'm seeing a significantly. Flat roof above it. And if you look at the grade for that from your reference point, it looks to be about thirty eight feet. Correct me if I'm wrong.
To the parapet of that, it is thirty eight change.
What is, what is it to the roof line below that path? Like another, another six inches or five inches?
Uh yeah, this this dimension where the hand is showing, about six inches, yeah.
And I just have a follow up question. This doesn't show on that flat roof portion. Any um HVAC systems or any um exhaust stacks or um. Energized systems that would provide heating or ventilation to the building. Are those a part of what would be envisioned on that flat surface?
Yes, we have, we're setting back the equipment fairly uh far back from the edge of the peak of the roof. And um I think we had a sightline section in one of our earlier drawings um that would show its viewing angle from the street. Also, a lot of, I will go back to. These perspectives here, these are actually real perspectives from the street with the equipment on the roof. That's showing that it's not seen uh from the pedestrian uh level. Thank you. That thirty two foot line is the midpoint of the slope roof in this elevation, just to connect all the dots together for everybody.
Yeah, all right, well, all right, uh I I won't say anything further right now. Deidre, anything you want to add?
So I'm sorry, so where the peak is on the very top, is that the thirty eight feet, thirty eight change?
Yes, that's correct.
And and the HVAC equipment and all of that, is that?
Set back, set back.
But is it, is it more than the thirty eight plus feet? With the HVAC stuff on top, in other words?
Would be, yes.
But your bylaws, your bylaws are permitting that.
Oh, yeah.
Fireplace, you your fireplace is not considered as a part of the measurement for the for the height. Unless it's habitable space, then then I would say, yes, then that would be in violation of your bylaw, because remember. The max you can go is forty feet. Uh with the slopes and this is under the forty feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris?
So, Tom, if if I'm pulling up the right document, it looks like the peer review found that the plan with the suggested roof angle. found that the plan with the suggested roof angle is compliant with the bylaw. So that's one thing.
And I happen to disagree with them.
Okay. Another thing that I'm taking into consideration is that from the street uh to to us with multiple angles at our disposal, it's obvious that's a flat roof. From the street, it it looks pretty good. You might not know that there's a flat roof up there, especially if you can't see the HVAC equipment at the top. And the other thing I'll note is that, I think, uh, and the architects may be able to verify this for us, I think this building is still shorter than the red line right next to it. So um, I'm those are the things that I just wanna throw into the conversation. I'm not sure where that leaves me because I agree with you, Tom, that this, this seems like a convenient interpretation of a poorly written bylaw, but I just wanted to throw those other points out.
Yeah, um, Lauren, were you able to find any, I I in anticipation, and since John's letter did some comparisons of other properties in the village, I asked Lauren if she could find the data for the red line expansion, and do we, do we know what the height of the red line is?
I don't have that information, and John Howland wasn't available today.
Okay. And I I don't believe the red line received any variances. I doubt that they would have. Um, alright, um, Clark.
Um, did Amy go yet?
No, we're, we're going around the corner and you're next.
Okay. Well, then, um, uh regarding, regarding the height, I I have made comments on this in in past uh meetings that the the, under the, under the definition, um non-human habitated um um equipment and uh antennas, railings, cupolas, chimneys. As provided they don't exceed five percent of the roof area, uh they can extend above the, the um above the um
Yeah.
Roof area. So I guess I'm not concerned with the equipment per se, provided that it's five percent of the overall or less uh of the overall um area. Um, and in reading and rereading the definition for height, um, it's pretty much set up for uh either this or a flat roof or a a slope roof. In this particular case, we we have a hybrid, which is um, you know, approximately one-third sloped and and two-thirds flat. Um, but even even flat roofs uh have pitch to them. Um, and and it's possible be, because they have to pitch to drains, they aren't truly dead flat. Um uh where the uh the maximum height uh doesn't exceed the forty feet and and the the flat or almost flat roof, um um, the, if if you actually took the, the average of the the low point of the flat roof and the um uh, you know, an aggregate um of the the one-third area that is, that is pitched, you you might be uh pretty close to the thirty-five feet on, as an, as an average. Uh, but the the bylaw is really set up for either or, uh, either a flat roof or a pitched roof. Um, and not the the combination that we see here, or the combination that we saw on the, on the red line and and would would expect to see on on just about any project uh like this one. Um and and so under the, under the height definition, it it's it's my belief that um uh that the applicant has complied with the height requirement.
I just wanna interject for a second.
No, I'm I'm sorry, uh Clark, can you, can you say with your comments?
Yeah, that's, those are my comments.
Okay.
Tom, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yeah.
I'm hearing from my clients that they can't hear me. I just wanna make sure, can the board members hear me?
We can hear you. It's very soft.
It is, okay. Try to see if I can fix that.
I can hear you, John. Alright, uh Amy.
Um, yes, thank you for that um education. I would ask that uh to ensure that the strategy that's been proposed here does indeed include the best effort possible to have the equipment on the roof be obscured. So the, the architect can actually draw that on one of these diagrams and spin it around at different angles, so we would be able to see whether or not that's going to be something that is seen from the road or from uh other points uh in the town, cause I think that's aesthetically more troubling um than uh it it is, it itself has its own aesthetic problem, so I might get modeled in.
There, there were some aerial photos, um, or renderings. Um, before, can you guys scroll to the, the A, A zero point one, a couple of, couple of shots before this? That show um the equipment in three D as an aerial view.
Yeah, that one.
What if we were, can you hear me, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, can, I hope everybody, is it better this time, sounding wise?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. We could easily put up like what I would call like a Whittle's Walk around the, around certain components to, shall we say, obscure uh those units, if that's something uh Ms. Glassmeyer you think would be appropriate. I do notice that one Brook Street, which is diagonally across from us, it has a flat roof, and they did just that to kinda make it uh obscure whatever uh equipment that's on the rooftop.
That's like screening.
Correct.
I, I think that that would be um a a useful aesthetic uh exercise without having to implement it, but to see what you would come up with.
Sure, sure. That's, that makes sense, especially when you're in the parking lot, possibly, if you can see anything from that direction.
And that would fall under the category of railings that's in the five percent exclusion.
Exactly, yep.
Alright, um, anything else, Amy?
No, not at this time. I have other questions, but not of this discussion.
Yeah, okay, on this topic, I'm, we're, we're gonna bring this topic to a head. Can we go back?
Can I just um follow up on Clark's point um with regard to his opinion? Um, has, has our counsel, who's not here tonight, made an opinion as to whether um this complies or not with our current thirty-five-foot bylaw?
No. And I don't believe she's, she's been asked either.
Um, can we ask her? And here's why. I I don't want something to come in at thirty-eight plus or minus feet. And then on the basis of every other application that follows and similar roofs, say it worked here, and you had some, something that said thirty-five feet, but you clearly have permitted something that's thirty-eight feet with a flat roof. And all steam ahead.
I I hear what you're saying. I don't know that her opinion would matter one way or the other, because I think it's ultimately a decision that this board needs to make, and that's what I'd like to try to get to that point, but let's see where we go with in a minute, and if we need to have her opinion weigh in, you know, we're gonna continue this phase of the discussion, we can certainly get an opinion from her. But yeah, it it has a presidential value, and we have to be conscious of that, so.
I, here, here's the point. There's varying members that have um familiarity and an understanding of architectural, architectural terms, engineering, and design. That all comes to play with regard to these measurements and points of reference in what's accepted within the area of practice. And if it isn't our council that knows whether something fits or doesn't fit with our current bylaw, then I'd ask our professional planner to weigh in as to whether this under accepted planning uh and design considerations fits or doesn't fit with what we currently have for requirements.
Okay. And Kevin, I I would like just to add there that the building inspector did weigh in on the height at one point.
He said what, please?
The building inspector said that this is compliant um with uh the the slopes that they are not in excess, that in other words, the proposal is not in violation of the flat roofs.
Which, which is what our peer review engineer said as well.
Correct.
And again, they're not, in my view, they're not the fine, they're not the final word, but yeah, let me just make my point clear with that picture. Can we go back to the first sketch that had the measurements?
The, the section?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Now, the definition says, and again, John, your letter pointed this out. The midpoint shall be half the distance from the plate line to the ridge line. Alright, so where is the plate line on that?
It's right where the hand is, Tom. That's the roof where the roof commences. That's the plate line. And that goes to the midpoint between the plate line and the mid, uh, the roof, uh, the ridge, which is where the midpoint is right now at the thirty-two point nine.
And and here, here's my problem, is that in what everybody would understand to be a pitched roof like this, there is no living space within that roof area. It is a roof that is put, you know, you can't see where my fingers are going on your sketch, but it would go the top of the living space here. That, to me, is the plate line.
Well, Tom, you can take a look at a mansard roof, which has, again, roof lines that are 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 sloped back, and then at the very top, it's almost, it's not necessarily completely flat, but again, there's there's slope at a much smaller degree. You can take a look at a salt box. Salt box has a complete slope going back in habitable space, and that's where I think to Kevin's point, you know, you're looking at your bylaws, you're trying to evaluate them, you're looking at your village design um guidelines that are trying to take a look at your village, and like, how do you view it? Consistently and applying it consistently. What you know is, if you have a flat building, a literally flat building, like we do now, the gas station, it's measured from the ground up to the the ridge or the parapet. If you have a slope, obviously, you go in between where the roof starts and where the roof ends at the top, and you go to the midpoint. And as I said, and the, the, the reason for that is because there is habitable space between your, your peaks. It's diminished, and that's the reason why the bylaws in your town, just like any other town, gives more relief for people who have slopes, because when you think about it, we have slopes because of the weather. Otherwise, if you go out in the Midwest or the Southwest, they're all flat. Um, and that's so that you could have habitable space, because if you, if you max it out at thirty-five, and you don't have any sloped roofs, you're, you're gonna go lower than thirty-five feet. And so in this situation, in your village district, if you're trying to get all these uses, whether it's business, whether it's office, retail, and habitable residential, you wanna give that relief so that you can maximize multiple uses. If this was a single use, and you're gonna say, no, it should only be this, I would grant you that, but you're asking people to do more in this, giving public benefits, whether it's with parks, whether it's with walkways, whether it's with parking or off-street parking. So you should give the relief, again, you're not, and we're not asking for a variance, we're not asking to go beyond forty feet. We're saying it's between thirty-five feet and forty feet, and as represented here, it's not maxing it out either at forty feet. We're in between. And that's why I think the board should keep your discretion, but taking a look at this, and I realize that you may come to the conclusion it's flat. Tom, that's you, but I think the problem you're running to is, then, you know, how do you apply that going forward? Because, yes, Red Lion Inn has a flat portion. One Brook Street has a flat portion. You go all the way around, cause every aspect there is, and this is, in my, my opinion, this is this is your first case of building pursuant to in your, your village district um pursuant to those guidelines and trying to get all those components, affordability and retail, uh maybe even office space on a site that is woefully insufficient. So, and I think the other thing about the guidelines is this. That's why I highlighted it. They're trying to deal with the infill between the building next to us, which is Red Lion Inn. I think Mr. Plex, you'd mentioned that. How does that go across? Because if you, if you cap things at various levels when you start at grade, because all the buildings are not on grade, they're at various points where one may be perched higher than the other. And if you're gonna say it's capped at this, then you will have undulation, at least from your roof lines. Whereas you wanna be able to maintain kind of like this even flow going from building to building and building up the street.
Alright, well, again, I I I think the roof is measured after, when you get to the top of the usable living space here, and that's up here. So I, you know, to me, this is three and a half feet too high, or three, three and three quarters feet too high, but alright. Let's bring the issue, I I wanna bring this issue to the head, so we're not arguing it ad nauseam, so um.
Um, I was just gonna add one more data point in speaking with the Affordable Steering Committee, that they had a similar perspective um aligned with Chris's thought that from the street perspective, they cared more of what the height looked like versus the back, towards the back of the building. I know that they're, that they have a certain amount of weight, but not final decision, but I thought that that would be good use to understand their opinion.
Yeah, alright, let me ask, are there any members of the public out there that, uh, we have four attendees, other attendees that uh wished to weigh in on this? On just this issue of the height? Anyone? Nope, okay. Alright, so I I I'd like to, I'd, I'd like to put this to bed one way or the other with the board, so, you know, we're not, not taking a formal vote on, you know, like we would for the final decision, but let's just poll everybody. I mean, is this acceptable or unacceptable? Uh, with respect solely to the issue of height, I think John and Cassie should take to heart the comments about additional screening. That, that, that never has been an issue for me, because I know what the bylaw says about H, HVAC and all those additions, and that's never been an issue, but I think you should take those to heart and.
Well, we'll make sure. They, they're gonna be screened. I agree. That makes sense to hide them, even if you, even if you're maybe above, like at the Red Lion Inn, and you're on the third floor and you're looking down, you don't wanna be seeing units like that. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure there's adequate screening, screening.
I just second that, John. We'll, we'll make sure of that in the drawings.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so let's, let's, let me just go poll the board alphabetically, uh the height, acceptable or not acceptable? Clark?
Art Brewer, acceptable based on my, uh, the, the actual height definition in our zoning bylaw, which I have in front of me.
And Tom Callahan, unacceptable based on the same reason, which is also in front of me. Okay, Amy?
Um, I would like to see the screening and um I.
The issue, the issue of height, please.
Yeah, I know, I I understand that, but that is also.
It's a straw, it's a straw pole, non-binding.
Yeah, I I would say that I am uh still getting familiar with this particular version of it, so I'm gonna abstain.
Deidre?
Uh I see the difficulties in our bylaw, but as it's written right now, I think that this is acceptable.
Okay, um, oh, Kevin, and I apologize. Skipping over your alphabetically, Kevin.
Yeah, I find it acceptable as presented.
Chris?
Uh, I say acceptable based on the peer review findings, uh, the visual benefit of the slope roof as evident from what we have on screen now, and also because it's still shorter than the building right next to it.
Okay, alright, so that issue is put to bed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, board members.
Democracy is all about. Alright, so the other part, the, the other part um we could deal with. Um, Lauren, are you able, you think, to put up Weston and Sampson's October twenty-sixth memo?
Yes, just give me a moment.
If the architect could stop the screen share, we'll um.
We will take this offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having those at the ready for us.
Absolutely.
Probably didn't anticipate that.
We're always ready. Thank you.
Alright, so this again is just focused on the issues of traffic, uh, and we can put some of these issues to bed, I think, tonight as well. Um, we go down. There were a number of points where, you know, Weston and Sampson made comments, there was a response. And Weston and Sampson, I'm, I'm assuming acknowledged, no further comment at this time means it's acceptable to them. Where I started to see that there was an issue still was you know, and this is another one, folks, you know, we just did with the Beechwood Street project. This is a completely new use for the site and uh, I don't know if you heard our earlier meeting tonight, John, but, you know, with this and with the project down at the Atlantica site, we, we, we in the, in the zoning board and that other project as well, are per, are are conditioning on future traffic studies, since we have completely new uses here. And, you know, particularly with all these comments about the data being impacted by COVID and the uses, you know, that might be something that we would. that might be something that we would condition here too, that there'd be a further review of what the actual traffic impacts of this site gener- generates after a certain period of time. So I, it's just a thought to be, um, prepared for, you know, to, to be aware of and be prepared for. Um, on page six of Weston and Sampson's report, uh, there seems to still be, uh, an outstanding issue of how these eighteen spaces are going to work. Being, seeing that twelve of them are in tandem spaces. Um, and Weston and Sampson is asking for, uh, further clarification on this since there are two and three bedroom units. So if you could address that, please.
Yeah, I think, um, so if I'm not mistaken, what we're looking at is, um, some of the units will have two parking spaces. Okay. And kind of like the old traditional way that if you grew up in a three-bedroom home with one single driveway, you park your car in, you park your second car in. If you have need to get the first car that's been parked first, you gotta move the other one out to get it back and, you know, to, to move it. So that's gonna be incumbent upon the unit owners who do get two spaces to be able to manage and pull in and pull out and work their way within the site to be able to park and to maneuver their own parking. Um, obviously that's a benefit to them because they have two parking spaces. If we only permitted one, then that other parking space or parking the car is gonna have to go somewhere else. And I know here in the town of Situate, that's a major issue with the Mill Wharf because they only permitted one parking spot and everybody's parking in Cole Parkway on the waterside. So, um, our goal right now was everybody's, every unit's gonna get a parking space. Except some units are gonna have tandem and then they'll be able to work their way to be able to pull out a car, get their car out of there and then and some people may have like sports car or a car that they only take out on sunny days. Then if that's the case, they park it in first and they use their other car on a regular basis.
Are you, well, with the, I think their comment with the two or three bedrooms is there the potential that some of these units may have three cars?
I think they're getting out as well. I think what they're getting out as well is that the, uh, the units are made up of one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom units. So the tandem dump, the two parking spaces will be assigned to the two and three bedroom units, not the one bedroom.
Correct. But I think to, to your point, Tom, you're saying if they have three bedrooms, they're gonna be three cars.
Potentially, depending on who's living in.
May I share the screen? Would that be okay to share the plan?
Well, sure. Generally, generally, whether you have one or three-bedroom, um, houses or, or apartments, um, you, you don't know how many cars you're gonna get. Uh, and, and an average, um, you know, might be, might be two cars per unit. Um, but, um, what, what we require is is what we require. And then because the project's in a close proximity to the town lot, um, they get a little bit of flexibility.
And we're trying to offset that. That's the key. In other words, if we're only permitting twelve parking spaces, then you know, like I said, it's like what I said in Situate, somebody goes parks in the town lot and that's what we're trying to avoid. We're trying to put it on-site altogether.
A, a, and the zoning bylaws require, um, one parking space per unit. And we are doing that. There are twelve units and twelve spaces, plus the six additional tandem spaces.
This is gonna be twelve units total.
Correct.
With how many bedrooms total? Yeah, my, my concern, I know what the bylaw would require, but you know, particularly if this is, you know, this can either be downsizing housing or it could be starter housing. And what if you have three young people who are roommates in a three-bedroom, you know, and they're each gonna have a car. That's the concern. Where they're gonna go. And if they're gonna go into the town parking spot, that lot, that creates all other issues about everything that's going on in the village. I mean, you know, so I, I'm just curious as to how many bedrooms within those twelve years.
Uh, but just to answer your question on the bedroom count, there are, um, basically two one-bedrooms, eight two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. Um, that would be the math, but just to go back to the, the zoning, it is one per unit and we do have twelve independent spaces. And as a benefit, we've had an additional five spaces for those units that may be one, two, or three depending on their car usage, but it clearly is meeting the bylaw requirements of one parking spot per unit. You have seven where my hand is showing an additional five. And the additional five are to the benefit of the units.
And is the, is the commercial space generating some parking spaces?
That is exempted because due to, um, a separate bylaw section. Because we are within a certain distance of the public park.
But the Right, you have to show the five commercial parking spaces along.
Well, that, well, there is a benefit there that we can show too. So currently, right now, there are two large curb cuts on either side with two, uh, off-street, well, on-street parking lots spots here. And the new design, site plan closes those curb cuts and adds an additional three for a total of five. So we've actually added more public parking back to South Main Street. And just the section of the bylaw that exempts it is as per section seven point one dash K.
Uh, it, it will have to be clear on site, it's signage to not have your commercial tenants and their employees parking in these lots. They're gonna have to park somewhere else, but.
We can provide signage in the suitable locations.
Anyone from the, you know, I, I, I checked this off as, you know, a comment that was unresolved in this October twenty-sixth memo. Is there anything, uh, any member of the board has to say further on this or any concerns you have about this particular issue?
I have something.
Amy, go ahead.
I, I think you've done the best job you can. I am concerned that the distance between the parked cars is very narrow and that it is not hard to notice that in this town, many, many people have very big Suburbans, trucks, et cetera. So I would feel a lot better about not having problems if there was a simulation of how a car on one side and the other, how they're going to make the turn. And I would want to see different sized vehicles to see that it's going to be possible. The second thing I have to say, which is
I just asked you a quick question on that. Just what part of the bylaw are you referencing that you would be concerned? Because we meet the measurements per the bylaw. So which, which point in the, which part of the bylaw are you speaking to that addresses that concern?
Uh, I actually am not speaking specifically to a part of the bylaw. I'm asking a question of logic.
Being what?
Being that if you have a, if you have two large cars parked in those parking spaces, two Suburbans as an example, how will the traffic function inside that small space?
So if, if I may, Jeff Fassett here with Morse Engineering, um, section seven of the zoning bylaws um, has diagrams for the required dimensions of parking spaces. And for regular ninety-degree parking, you have to provide a twenty-four foot wide aisle, which we do comply with. And that does, uh, tend to be the standard in just about all the towns on the south shore is a, a twenty-four, twenty-four foot aisle in a commercial parking lot.
Um, when did we, uh, establish those, uh, measurements?
They are probably old and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm asking a question of just reasonableness based on the size of vehicles today. I don't think that that's a, that's an unfair question to ask. And, and I have one other further question, which is that is very tight. If there was a fire in the building, do you think that the vehicles could be brought out in time or would we have a conflagration? That's a very, very tight space with vehicles that have, uh, explosive materials in them.
Well, we're gonna, the building will meet all the requirements under the fire code. Um, I think, you know, to your point of, if you're looking for some kind of like traffic movement with SUVs or in particular larger vehicles like the Suburbans or the, uh, uh, Expeditions, uh, we can try to do that. I think, obviously, generally, the people who have those larger vehicles are the, the ones who have families. And, um, you know, for purposes of toting a lot of equipment and stuff around or gears, I would say. Um, we don't envision that there're gonna be a lot of multifamilies with a lot of kids living in this, this section. I think you're gonna find more. It's gonna be people with scale down, kind of like more, more expensive cars, sedans. Um, hopefully electric, because that's a component that we'd certainly like to see going forward. Um, so that people who are downsizing are moving into, uh, the downtown, um, as opposed to families moving in. But I, to your point, we can, we can certainly try to provide you with the movement, you know, I don't think that's.
Just in terms of, of conceptually, how, how will this work? And I recognize that, um, you've meet, met the bylaws, but we all are acknowledging, uh, uh, of this day, last day and about, for the last three weeks years, that our zoning bylaw is in a, is deficient because it hasn't been updated. So it would be, it would be a tragedy to not try to think some of these things through so that we have a safe and wonderful project.
I, I can, I can tell you from the perspective of the bylaw committee, when we look at the parking bylaw, we do wanna update it, you know, to the state of the art of, you know, how many spaces per commercial square feet or seats in a restaurant. And, and the size, you know, all of those things have to be reviewed and updated because all of these bylaws our town and the surrounding towns are, they are dated. And they probably haven't anticipated all of the mega vehicles that are out there, but, um, you know, so we will look at that going forward, but, uh, the question here is what can we do now? But, you know, in anticipating what Clark is gonna be discussing at a zoning forum in December, and you talk about electric cars, are you making any accommodation for the future? Because I mean, this is diverting from the topic, but you know, we, we don't have the bylaws in place yet for the future and green development, sustainable development. But are you, you know, this is a brand new building. Are you anticipating any kind of systems that are gonna uh, address the future, you know, whether it's electrical cars or, or other?
You mean like charging stations or?
Well, charging stations, but yeah, but even beyond that, any other super environmental features here that, that, you know, future bylaws are going to require.
So, Tom, to your point, um, our response, which was in our letter that I sent, uh, was that we, we certainly, our ownership team is taking that as a, uh, under consideration. I think I, a big point was where are we going with different components? And I think that's a good thing for this project. And I know that we're kind of excited about that. So that's certainly a consideration that we're willing to understand or undertake. I think, um, obviously the parking, I know, um, Ms. Glassmore had mentioned the last meeting. At one point, I, maybe it was the last meeting that we weren't here because we continued it. He said something about parking. So I was trying to get a sense of what was the issue? Was it the tandem parking? Because we actually thought tandem parking was gonna be a good thing because we know people have more than one car. You know, and so we're trying to offset the parking that we know could easily go into the parking lot. Um, we understand though, I see what you're saying, the concerns that if you're gonna have tandem parking, larger vehicles, because yes, that's a fact of life now. You see all these big vehicles being driven. So we'll take a look at the, the movement to see how it goes. And I think the other thing is, uh, even if there is a Suburban there or an Expedition, they're not all gonna be there at the same time. There's probably one or two because everybody has different tastes for vehicles. Um, is what we anticipate. But we'll look at that. But yes, that's certainly a consideration, Tom, that we're looking at with electrical charging stations.
Yeah, the environmental stuff might have been in another part of Weston Sampson September. Get to, but it's just, it just popped in my head at the moment, but.
Alright, um. May I just add one, one quick question? The zoning on the size of the spot, which may help alleviate alleviate some of the pressure on this, is that the width of a spot on the zoning is nine and a half feet by twenty and a conventional parking spot is typically eight and a half by twenty. So they're actually much wider than most conventional parking spots, which would help, I think, address some of this issue as well.
I mean, and you, you know, I, I think we all appreciate that you have the problem that you need eighteen spaces into this confined space, you know.
I mean, remember, our first idea was we're gonna try to put a parking garage in there, an automated one. It was just because of the ground and everything, it's, it's cost prohibitive. So we were trying to get as much parking onsite as possible. And we just thought it was a public benefit to keep excess parking onsite than it would be to offload it into the park in the public area.
I, I, you know, I, I think the tandem, um, spots, they're, they're kind of weird. Except if, um, the, the two tandem spots are assigned to a specific unit, then the people in the unit can manage their own, uh, parking. If, and, and I think that was the answer that we didn't have um, when, when it was first introduced. And, and for me, I think that, that settles the management of those tandem parking spots. So if it's a free-for-all, then it really doesn't work. You have to, you have to call, uh, your neighbor and the neighbor's not there and your car is trapped and that just doesn't work. Like Bernie Denna, he said, um, you know, that it, it's, it's like a single-family house in a tight neighborhood where you have a single strip driveway. You have two cars, the person who, who's in the back, um, has got to move it out in the morning or move it out in the evening before, uh, and plan ahead. That's, um, that's, that's a part of the, the people who live together can, can manage their, their parking accommodations. And it might be that, that these spots, that the, the tandem spots don't necessarily get used in, in, uh, the town parking lot and gets used more, um, uh, for this particular project.
Alright, any other board members have a comment on this particular point of the parking spaces? If not, um, let's move on. Lauren, to page seven of the Weston and Sampson memo. Try to, if you could unminimize your screen for the moment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, back to, back to, uh, page seven. Um, the next point that is a point that's needs resolution. John, this will be on you.
Okay.
I think anytime we, uh, you know, and this happened down with the Harbor projects, anytime the town is gonna be involved with an easement, we need to have it in writing and approved by council and approved by the select board. So I assume that's something you're gonna be working on and writing. So the sooner you have, you know, if you have a draft easement in place, we're ready to close this hearing and, and make a decision, that would, the sooner the better. And then we can get it to town council.
Yep, I'll take care of that.
I would make a comment about the easement not to direct, um, the applicant's uh, council to the, the harbor because it was in the town's interest and it was in the project's interest. This may not be the same kind of arrangement, so um, I think we need to be prepared for that.
I'm trying to grasp what you're saying here.
A town had something of its property on the applicant and the applicant had something on the town's property. So we swapped, we swapped the easements.
Yeah, but here there is, their, their use is going on to town property and that requires an easement.
I know, I, I understand that, but I'm saying that, that maybe there will be consequence of the easement. It's not like the Harbor project.
Okay, I, I, I guess, I guess, I mean, I was equating it in the fact that when we involved with easements, we want them in writing, not to equate it exactly with the Harbor, but if the private owner is gonna be using town property, that we need a written easement for. But so, um, alright, but sooner that, the sooner that's drafted is the better.
Yep.
Like, you know, the first instance should come from you, not from town council.
I'll take.
Alright, page, page eight. Page eight. At the top, Weston and Sampson is still pointing out that, um, it does not appear that the minimum five-foot-wide ADA ramp is being provided. So that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll take care of that. We'll widen it to, uh, the five feet recommended.
Okay, and then, uh, the next one about landscaping. The applicant requests to waiver parking lot landscaping should not have a continuous curve in all places to. In the case, the landscaped island is upgrading to the parking area.
Do you want a, a waiver from us to request it?
Well, I mean, Weston and Sampson is, is, is requesting that the waiver request be in writing and I would agree with that.
Okay.
Um, to be specific, but I'm, then I'm looking at your response to their original comment and uh, is this waiver really necessary? It's not realistic to comply with the requirement and maybe Ted needs to pull up. the, uh, plans again so we can see this, um.
Ted, are you there?
There you go.
I mean, is it?
Sorry, just pulling it up right now.
Yeah. So where, where, which area are we talking about, where those three trees are?
Yeah, so in that area along parking way, there is a landscape bed there. And, well, what the comment was is that the parking area does not slope to that landscape area. I think the intent of the bylaws to make the landscape area a low point to collect runoff.
Correct.
In this case, though, parking lot wave is a couple of feet higher in elevation than the parking area. And at the edge of parking area, there's, there's a retaining wall. So it's not realist with, with the landscape bed being higher in elevation. So it's really not realistic to pitch the water towards that wall.
Where, where is the retaining wall, between the trees and the parking area?
Yeah, correct.
All right. Is it impossible?
Also, the positive, the pitch will be, the pitch will be away from this area to center drain and not be pitching towards the landscape in any event. So I think this is important to note, is that the, the proposed slope would have a center area drain here, which would catch the surface stormwater, and it would not be pitching back to a landscape zone in any event.
It, and, and it's also porous asphalt.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, there's nothing that can be done about, I mean, the first, the, the, the first thought that it occurred to me was sinking the landscape area somewhat, but that.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
Where, where is the drainage in the parking lot going?
So, right foot in the drainage, it's a, it's a porous asphalt. Um, so the water will, will infiltrate through the asphalt, but then we have as a backup measure, a catch basin, uh, capturing, um, that could capture overflow, and then that, that is piped out into the roadway drainage system and ultim- ultimately to a culvert.
Also, I think just to the comment around sinking the landscape, I think the benefit here is a good buffer to the parking and a nice green edge to the pedestrian way and also adequate screening, as mentioned, to the parking area, so. I think from a design point of view, it achieves a lot of other benefits and.
Anybody on the board have any thought about this?
I, I, I think if we take a step back from the visual benefits, I think this is an opportunity lost. If we can't look to a design that would provide an infiltration gallery, this is an area with a significant amount of um, non-pervious, um, surfaces, notwithstanding the driveway that you've designed in the infiltration points and design aspects of that. But the town parking lot is not a porous surface. The driveway going to that parking lot, that would be just south of this area we're discussing right here, is not a porous surface. Sidewalks in the front of the building, South Main Street itself is, these are all impervious surfaces, and I think the opportunity may be lost here if we're not really taking out our pencils and our design options here and looking at them fully to see if there's a way to accommodate some infiltration in this, and also get the visuals that this does provide as something that sets off the parking area, the underneath of the building from someone approaching, uh, along that road to the south. Hey Jeff, as, oh, I'm sorry, Kevin, I was, I didn't mean, I was just gonna add something that, as there's a possibility that we could pitch to your point, we could look at repitching the water to this planted edge here and lower this planted edge to achieve some of the goals that were pointed out. I, I think that would be positive, just because if we can take some of the loading off of the culvert and, and, you know, we know, we all know what culverts end up doing during these hundred year storms we get every two years around here, they get overloaded, okay? And the culverts themselves drain to areas that are overloaded or subject to tidal influence, okay? I think we need to get as much as we can out of the design feature here, and if this is an infiltration gallery that can have a slope to it, to maximize this as a point and take some of the load off of a culvert, I think that's, um, a design feature that, uh, could go some real distance here to help alleviate some other issues we have in and around this area of town. Yeah, we can look at that, and Jeff, I think we could just put our heads together on this, look at lowering this plantar edge and pitching it back and achieving some things that Kevin is bringing up.
All right.
Sure, we can look into that.
See, if you could do that, and if you, again, but if you end up with the waiver, I, idea, then you have to put it in writing, with, with the specifics. All right, um, back to, I think the last comment that remained open was on page nine. Of the Weston and Sampson letter, if we could get that back up. And that's what our peer review is still looking for, a sightline diagram overlaid on the proposed site plan, so it can be reviewed in relation to the proposed building, so. I think that's a requirement we'd wanna have, uh, you know, for the next hearing, so we, we can take.
Jeff, can you take care of that?
Uh, we probably, um, have talked to the, um, the traffic consultant about it, but either.
Melissa, Melissa and us, we'll have that then.
Okay. All right, well, you got that memo, uh, I think out of the way, um. So last issue, I wanna see if we can address tonight to some point of conclusion, maybe, maybe not, is the affordable housing piece, um, so. Uh, Cassie, I understand you met with the Affordable Housing Committee again, I just remind everybody that theirs is a recommendation, it's not binding, but what, what, where do you stand with their recommendation, or do they have one?
They haven't made quite a recommendation yet, quite yet, Tom, um, Paul, it was the first time meeting with Paul, uh, the second time meeting with everyone else, Paul wasn't able to meet the first time, so yesterday was more of a high level overview and just discussing the project in detail to give him an idea, um, of what we envisioned for the site, so. Um, we would like to further just the discussion of affordable housing, we hear everyone loud and clear, we take it very seriously regarding the affordable housing. Um, what did come up yesterday, that was a good point, was that um, you know, just thinking through rentals and condos, and I think that we really need to just kinda make a decision on that, and so, um, Lauren had made the good point about, uh, only, all of the rentals, we did rentals, would only be considered a part of the, um, the S A, S A H I is if we did twenty percent affordability onsite. And so I just, I think financially that does not work for us, so that's one data point that we've learned since discussing with the planning board and the Affordable Steering Committee. Um, so, and, and also I think that we had learned that it doesn't really matter if we do affordables or condos if something is offsite, because only the the units offsite would be considered deed restricted, so if we were going condos, it wouldn't really matter if the units were onsite or offsite. If that makes sense.
Yeah, again, but remember that part of the reason for the changes to the village zoning was to encourage affordable quotes, you know, housing, not necessarily forty B definition of affordable, so, you know, you need to be conscious of that, uh, high priced condo, high priced condos is not what this town needs.
Agreed, and, and I also think the other side of that is making, so if we don't wanna, we don't wanna make the units onsite feel exclusive or over expensive because of having to accommodate the affordable status onsite, so that's another balance that we're trying to figure out, um, onsite versus offsite, because if they're onsite, it unfortunately would increase the market rate prices. So that was another thing that we discussed high level with the Affordable Steering Committee, and, and they seem, it seems well received that they understood that if it had to be onsite, if if we did do it onsite, it would mean that the market rates would be increased, whether they be rentals or.
You could take the Avalon approach, which is to design all their units to look the same, whether they're market rated or affordable.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have two hundred plus units here, uh, to work with, so it's, it's a little different, but.
Is there any stipulation for the, um, targeting of senior housing as a part of forty B? I don't remember reading that, but, you know, in a lot of other parts of the country, when you're asked to do affordable housing, you do be, you're given choices about multifamily, elderly, et cetera, and I know that Cohasset has, uh, number of units where that's the case, Lauren.
You don't, you don't have to raise your hand, I knew, I was gonna go right to you, Lauren, so.
I was gonna say, um, thank you, um, without getting too far into the weeds, the the way that the subsidized housing inventory, which is what everybody thinks about for forty B compliance, it doesn't factor in um, age restricted housing, and actually, and oftentimes, the criteria to meet the eligibility to be able to be living in one of these units, that you're, you either have to be a first time home buyer, there's extreme asset limits, there's a whole lot that goes into it, which is, can be very problematic for the senior population, just, you know, there's a lot, but short answer is no, forty B and affordable, and elder housing do not go hand in hand, and oftentimes it's not recommended because of some of those implications of financing and, and, you know, in situations where people earn a fixed income.
So for the next five que- questions, I'm going to just go up or down.
But Amy, I think to your point, this type of housing would definitely, from a security perspective, accessibility perspective, ADA compliance perspective, it would be a great option for seniors, so, um, we do take that into consideration as well.
Okay, all right, before we close, uh, Lauren, anything on the topics we've discussed tonight that you wanna add to or comment on?
Uh, just, uh, just a point of clarification, which Cassie already covered, um, to, in a rental project, you would need actually twenty-five percent of all the units, so it's even a greater percentage, um, and I think that is something that I'd be happy to give some information to the board members, just about in general affordability and sort of, um, benefits that you can look for in development and how they impact the margins, just so that you sort of have a general understanding of what the metrics are and why this is such a decision point for Cassie and team to figure out, you know, because if you're gonna be asking for more, that's gonna really just eat into the margins, it's, you start to strip away, you can't have it all, so it's like, do you want, you know, what are your priorities in a project, do you wanna see affordability, do you prefer to see homeownership, do you wanna see more public benefit? Those are the type of trades that you have to see, so I will send some more information for you to consider, other than that, I think you've.
The difference between ten and twenty-five percent here is two units and three units. It's really just one unit, just so we know that.
That's still, that's still quite a bit for a small up.
Oh, I get it, no, I get it, but I just, we also should just know that in terms of real numbers of one of the units, and you know, Pleasant Street voluntarily gave us the twenty-five percent, but they were what, I don't know, fourteen, sixteen units, they were a bigger project, so. All right, anything else that, you know, on traffic or anything that, or any of the other issues we talked about that you, you see we need to address further or?
I have nothing further to add, I think you've made a lot of salient points, um, so I've taken notes on what the follow up items are.
Just, just to follow up on the affordable housing, uh, thing, it is possible to find outside financing for a buy down of, of one additional unit if they were rental, and then have all the units count. Um, it's not necessarily a requirement that the, that the developer fit the, um, uh, um, take the, the burden of, of the entire cost of that additional unit, um, uh, on their own, there are other sources that, and that, and that could make the project at, um, twenty-five percent um, if it's rental, so there's options.
All right, so for going forward on this, um, I think we're all anxious to get this to conclusion at some point, so. Um, Lauren will pass along to you, John, the exact dollar amount that Weston and Sampson needs, some of it is the, the October twenty-six memo that they generated on traffic was done by them with the, the till being empty, so some of the money is to pay for that. Pay for post, uh, I, I think they ran out of money on September thirtieth, so it's for post September work, and then there's the additional money going through. If they're, um, so we're dealing with the rest of the points other than traffic on their September twenty-six memo, if you have responded to those points, let's make sure we get those circulated. And let's make sure Weston and Sampson has their subsequent response ready for the next meeting that we do. And I know, um, you, you mentioned to me that, uh, uh, what's his name, Jeffrey Eden from Weston Sampson is gonna be available for our next couple of meetings, uh, dates if we need him, and I think we would need him, so. Um, let's set, let's set the date for this, uh, to get, to get all these materials ready, and then there are some updates tonight, too, that we discussed that you'll submit to us as well. Um, what's, what's our calendar looking like to, to continue this to?
Your next meeting date is November sixteenth, followed by December seventh and fourteenth.
Are they packed?
No.
This is what interest rates do. It is, it is, I mean, everything stopped, it's.
Is it, is it realistic to assume we can have everything ready for the sixteenth? I, I, you know, I wouldn't go too strict, if, if, if John's group has already responded to the other parts of the September twenty-six memo, that's, that's a lot of work that's already been done, so it's really on, uh, Weston and Sampson, and, you know, I, I personally wouldn't hold to a strict one week before we won this one at this point, but, uh, do you think we can do this for the sixteen?
So, is that a question to me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, just, if I could ask a point to attorney dating, is there another memo that you are referring to that was submitted by you? That, okay, so there is one.
Two letters, I dropped off a letter to Tom for the board with the memo about.
With the memo, okay.
What I dropped was, um, a letter to Tom and the board answering everything, I consolidate, consolidated everything for the, um, Weston and Sampson.
Right, that is, that is not the October fourth letter that I see from.
They're both dated the same day, but I'll, I'll email that to you.
Okay.
Three things submitted, and I've seen two, okay, like that. All right, it's, it, let, let's shoot for the sixteen. And particularly if that's a clear night for our calendar, it's gonna be a good one to go through all the issues.
Good.
Um. We, we have in the past on some projects like this, uh, asked the developer, we've invited the developer to submit potential conditions, and I think unless anybody on the board objects, we'll extend that courtesy here as well, but, uh, I wouldn't anticipate on the sixteenth that we're ready to do a decision with all of our conditions, but we might be in a position to close it and be, be ready to move forward. Um, at the following, uh, next meeting, to actually issue the decision, so. But you have a easement to write, wanted your conditions, suggested conditions for three. And, uh, let's find that one missing comment letter and get it to Weston and Sampson and, and the money to Weston and Sampson.
Good, absolutely.
All right, anybody else on the board have any thoughts, comments before we finish this one up for tonight?
Um, this is a site with twenty-one E issues, where are we with that?
We are actually, um, so that, we have an LSP, uh, the, um, DEP is actually monitoring it, it's a contaminated site. Um, not only do we have an LSP, but, uh, our finance, our, our lender actually hired an LSP. Um, I wanna make sure that we're abundantly clear, we did not contaminate the site, we're actually buying the site to fix the site, to clean the site, and we're gonna adhere to all the regulations from DEP. And that's where we're at right now, uh, we've gone to phase two, and, uh, like I said, I don't believe our, uh, LSP is with us tonight, because I know we're gonna get to it, because I know that, uh, our response was a part of our response letter. But that's where we stand, I'm like, we're here to clean it up, to be able to put this facility and get rid of that gas station.
But you, but you don't have a specific directive from the state yet of timeframe of cleaning it up, how to clean it up, none of that's been decided, yeah.
Not at this point, um, we're still, we're still in the, the process after phase two.
And I, and I, I think, Kevin, we could probably issue a decision that's conditional on a lot of things happening with respect to that twenty-one E.
Yeah.
Uh, but basically, nothing will happen until that twenty-one E is resolved, and if the state issues in order to do a massive, you know, scooping out the earth and cleaning it up, but getting rid of it, you know, that.
Well, let, let's just be clear, the state has privatized the environmental issues in the Commonwealth, and that's falls on the purview of the licensed site professional to make the professional determination as to how to comply with the Massachusetts contingency plan. If the state were to audit this privatized program, then the state could do so, and it does do that to a percentage of all its sites. But I think as a board, we have asked for and we have not heard from the LSP that's been retained by the developer here, by the applicant, to move forward with housing on this site, to move forward with first level commercial use, to move forward with what could be exposure scenarios to the public, to residents over what is a contaminated site, duly noted, it's a contaminated site, it's been one, okay? There's no shortage of these types of sites, and they've been dealt with in the past, but we do need to know where this is headed, and to say there's an LSP. And to say there's an LSP that's retained is all we've heard thus far, and we don't know how the LSP plans to close out. This site from a twenty one E perspective and what mitigation measures will be incorporated to do that.
Okay, that's a point very well taken and. Lauren, I don't know if you noticed, does Weston and Sampson have any LSP capabilities where they could review something that we received from their LSP? If we if we wanted that to be done?
I'll inquire, they did have a very wide array of specialties when we did our RFP process, which is why we selected them, so I'll ask.
John, I thought there was a comment made in the. Care review report.
There's a comment, and I know um for Kevin's point, he was there at last meeting that we had a full meeting, um, so he'll be at our next one also.
Yeah, I I think he should be there and be prepared, if if there's any reports he's issued to you about what he's found on the site. Thoughts about mitigation, what might not be done, I think we should have that and he should be prepared to answer questions and. You know, again, if we have a wide open agenda next time where we have some time. Um, you know, we can spend some time on 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 that particular issue in some level of detail, I think it's it's a point very well taken, so.
All right, good.
Thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up.
I just wanted to clarify for you, you do have time, we have, we don't have any new applications and there's no other continuances on the sixteen, so we were just. Gonna talk about other planning board matters, we can do that another time, you can dedicate as much time as you need at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, well then, let's let's be prepared, John, to have your full team ready to answer questions and and. If there is any LSP report or assessment that he's that he or she has done, let us see that ahead of time. So that we can be prepared with some questions.
Good, thank you, yep, that that actually was the response that you'll read, that he would be available to answer your questions. So I'll be here next time.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to continue this matter till November sixteenth at six thirty.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call, Clark.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
E glass Meyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Andrew Hobson, I.
Chris Plax, I.
All right, great, all right, John, thank you, Cassie, thank you, your team.
James Donald, thank you very much, we'll see you on the.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Okay, we have some minutes, I believe, to approve. With the minutes of our, what, September twenty eight meeting or twenty six? I know Angel has circulated them the other day.
The twenty eighth, yeah.
Twenty eight. Anybody have any comments edits to them?
Oh, no.
Motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Second. Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Glass Meyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Andrew Hobson, I.
Chris Plax, I.
Okay. I will spare you a lot about the zoning bylaw committee, except that our next forum is next Monday. We will be hearing from Lauren and someone from MAPC on. Uh, the state housing mandates and statutes we deal with, forty B, the MBTA mandate, forty R, forty S. Then we will have a presentation from our Affordable Housing Committee. Regarding the housing plan and how it addresses specifically diversity of housing and multifamilies. And then Woody Chittick from ZBA is going to be presenting on the accessory dwelling by law, both of our existing by law. Why it's not widely utilized and what we might do to change that. Unlike the last forum, which we broke up, Harvard Village, these presentations will go one after another and we will. Be doing all the Q and A that once again will be moderated by MAPC all at the end of it, so. Should be a good one, and uh, that will be Monday at six thirty, it's live at the Senior Center. It'll also be on Zoom and then it'll be on uh, one four three TV. Uh, I'll just tell you that the bylaw committee, we dealt with a lot of uh, feedback and. Uh, we we don't, you know, we we scrutinize what happened at the first forum and the feedback we got and the issues. We have to address going forward. We've also been given some materials by Lauren and. Carolyn and recently today are, one of our members, Dave Farrak, about linkage and. Mitigation payments, because that seemed to be a sentiment that came out of the first forum as well, is it is something we are going to pursue. And uh, you know, we're going forward with our review of bylaw section, section by section. Uh, we'll be taking that up, our next meeting for the bylaw committee is the ninth, and then we're also meeting the thirtieth, um. And we'll continue with, you know, we're moving on a bunch of tracks of. Getting these forums ready and absorbing the feedback from them, looking at. Actual bylaw sections and changes of text and then working on new initiatives, some of which are arising out of these forums. Uh, we're still following the game plan that uh. Springtown meeting will be mostly reorganization, it may have some substantive issues that we have to address, and then the fall. Would probably be the heavy lifting substantive changes. Uh, Clark, unless there's something you want to add about that committee?
Nope, that's fine.
Uh, anybody else have a subcommittee report?
Just a quick question, sorry, Tom, the Zoom link will be where? Sorry for that.
So the Zoom link is going to be in a couple places, there's a flyer that gets distributed with the link, if you go to the main town website, there should be. This time they're gonna make a really obvious button for people, because I know a lot of people couldn't couldn't find, couldn't locate it. Also, at any point, if you go to the public meeting calendars. If you go straight to it, I know sometimes it brings you, it just says select board, but all you have to do is scroll down, for some reason, it's not alphabetical and it puts select board on top. When it lists all of the committees, but you can always scroll down and the public meeting calendar on the front page shows a grid. It typically has like the night of, it shows you right there, we always will post the zoning bylaw committee attending said forums, you can even post their meeting agenda to get to it. Thank you.
I think it's also, I think it's also on the zoning bylaw committee's separate page, right, under its its agenda, so. But yeah, if it's made obvious on page one, I hope that's better, but uh.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I look forward to everybody participating in that, any other liaison assignments, I. Is is the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Elm Street Working Group been officially killed by the select board? I shouldn't put it that way, sorry, sorry, selectmen, if you're listening, but uh.
I'll just quickly, that was on my list of things um to bring up with you, so the Elm Street Corridor Working Group sunsetted at the end of, I forget what summer month. They came to ultimately a recommendation, but then the grant funding potential that we were hoping was coming through the state budget. Ultimately just fell through, we weren't allocated that that money, um, it was supposed to really be a governor's bill to sort of like. Give runner up funding to allocate a bunch of federal ARPA spending dollars from the state budget. To municipalities who had previously applied for grant programs that were like runners up. So we thought that we were having this earmark coming for five hundred thousand dollars for the Elm Street Corridor. Ultimately, that bill never passed through the state budget, so that was taken off the table, at this point, there was hesitancy. Um, to move forward on picking a consensus as to whether there would be redesign of Elm Street Corridor. Alone or Elm Street Corridor and reconfiguration of the intersection, so that. Uh, never was, there was never a decision point from the decision making body, is what I'll say, Elm Street Corridor Working Group. Had their recommendation as to what they would suggest, but ultimately, um, because this project. Is not, the paving cycle for our public works paving contract was already set. And Elm Street was not put into the upcoming cycle, because at the time Elm Street Corridor Working Group was still working. And now we know it will be coming up in the following fiscal cycle, at some point it will come back and there will be a time to make a decision, but right now it's sort of just been. Simmering on back burner, to put it nicely. Master Plan Implementation Committee is something that I wanted to bring back up to you, they have also um, been in a little bit of a recess. We do have a vacancy in a chair position there, there are. Activities that would fall under Master Plan umbrella that are still taking place, but the committee is not actively meeting right now. And that's something that I wanted to bring up with the with this group. In one of our upcoming meetings, maybe not in November now, maybe we'll do it in December, but to talk about Master Plan and maybe. How we get the implementation committee back on track, because there are a lot of other projects. That could use some direction and engagement from the group, an example that comes to mind is, you know, we have an earmark. From state budget for village study, and I know parking is an item that keeps coming up, so. We have funds available to bring in, you know, a a consultant or someone who's a specialist in this to do this work, it's just a matter of. You know, let's maybe get the committee reengaged and if there's turnover or seats available, get the right people plugged in, so that's sort of the conversation I want to have with all of you.
Amy, are you still technically on the committee?
I think so, I haven't, I'm not, I don't, I didn't make it myself. I was trying, I know I was, I wasn't.
No, okay.
I believe in this thing.
And I know we cut down on our liaison assignments, but we don't have anything else to report from liaisons, do we?
I will just report back about affordable housing items, there's a couple of things that are um, sort of making their way. Towards almost final stages of certificates of occupancy, eight oh eight Jerusalem Road officially is through their local permitting and they closed. Paperwork's done now, so now, Abjet from Humanity, once they finish their fundraising. Sort of pyramid that they need to build, you'll start to hear about like public outreach events to raise money for this. So eight oh eight Jerusalem Road is moving forward and that's really exciting, because I know it's been on the town's radar for a long time. Um, we'll have two D restricted affordable homeownership units with Jerusalem Road addresses in town, which I think is great. And um, we also have some potential projects that are. Currently, I'm not able to disclose, um, but there may be a potential to, you know. Bring in some more units, but right now our pipeline that we've been looking at that we even know in terms of like. Permitted projects or some form of construction pipeline, we have about forty three, forty five units in the pipeline that would be. SHI eligible, so um, more details to come, I'll sell, I'll circulate also to all of you, like the PowerPoint material. As background um that I've given about affordable housing and that I'll talk about at the forum on the seventh, but. We're sort of like in this gray area of safe harbor, I I think we're going to be in a good place and we are currently projected to be. You know, if this pipeline continues and these construction projects develop as they're intended, we will be making considerable progress on our subsidized housing inventory.
For the twenty twenty census, which hasn't been finalized yet.
Right.
Yeah. I presume the buildings that stop and shop, if he's getting close to a sewer connection, they'll all come online soon, I I know he's advertising for his lottery. Um, I presume the hotel projects, they've done their lottery, correct?
Yes, those are units that I'm uh working actually currently to get on the SHI, it's just a process to confirm with the HCD.
And I heard that the potential friendly forty B next across from the train station entrance is off the table, it was withdrawn.
Correct, well, it wasn't withdrawn, the select board took the position that, given that we are in the midst of a zoning. Uh, you know, overhaul, taking a look at our comprehensive zoning, that they wanted to put a pause on accepting LIP applications. At this time, particularly thinking about how. Not, whether this project moves forward or not. Compliance with the MBTA communities isn't, it doesn't go hand in hand with just developing, it really is what it's zoned for, it's not what's on the ground, so. Even if you use forty B or a local initiative program, which is like a friendly forty B to develop something near the train station. That development doesn't inherently count towards MBTA compliance, because you haven't changed the zoning of that parcel. So, it's not, it's sort of like, once I explained that to them, they realized that like, no matter what, they would need to find a zoning change. Solution to do MBTA compliance, and that is not inherently the same as going ahead with this program, so with all of this. Sort of influx, they took a position that they that they just want to press pause on accepting these LIP programs for. You know, particularly in a residential zoning where it's like a vastly a density change that would be allowed under current zoning.
Lauren is gonna explain all of this mess of state stuff on Monday in ten fifteen minutes, which is. Maybe something to say. I'm expecting great things, uh, all right, anything else, Lauren, on on your plate?
So the only other things that will be coming up in the month of December now will be additional planning board training, we had last. KP Law was here, we were looking at doing it like December, January timeframe, and I think the topic that we'll look to address is um, refresher on. The zoning bylaw amendment process and and, you know, the public hearing process, the town meeting. Um, it'll be, you know, timely to to get that refresher before we head into a a town meeting cycle, and then in addition. E permitting is the last update I wanted to give you, we've made considerable progress with our vendor for online electronic permitting for the rollout of. For planning applications, planning and zoning applications, we're currently gonna, we're tentatively working towards a soft opening on a couple of our applications, but the. Really exciting part about this is that it's gonna ultimately make like everyone's lives easier, because you will be able, will be able to set you up. You get an automatic email account notification anytime a new application has new information, and it sort of automates the system. And it's publicly accessible, so it it, it's also more like an easily accountability thing, because you see. Every time it's on the applicant to upload and you can put in comments, it's just a sort of a a cleaner process system. And it's better for um accounting and transparency, so. It's coming soon, it's been in progress for years, like literally a couple town planners ago, but we're we're almost there, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, when you mentioned that people will be able to comment on it, I just worry about that, I hope they thought that through with respect to the open meeting law.
It's just, uh, it would be a sign commenting, so yeah, I'll clarify more when I explain it, but like, I can comment, I can tag like Charlotte Peckal and Conservation and and. You know, say, can you review, and she can leave a comment on it, as opposed to me like emailing out comment forms like we typically do now in paper. And kind of chase around departments, getting comments back, we can just automate it, that it's in the system that already also speaks with our building permits right now.
Okay, good. All right, thank you, any, but any other members have any particular issues? Cause of rumors. Uh, that they wish to bring up, I did know, by the way, the select board did a live meeting last night. In the senior center room, I I I hope we're all getting to the point where we can figure out going back to live meetings. As soon as we can, but.
That's on my list to talk to you about this week, Tom, so.
Oh, okay.
More to come.
I can't wait, all right.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Yeah, it will be, I I mean, I guess they were also on Zoom last night, I think I heard, I the little bit I watched on television, I. Think they took a Zoom comment from somebody, so. You know, I think that it worked fairly smoothly at the first forum, so it is possible to do these hybrids, I I I understand the biggest problem is the location. Um, I guess the good news is we won't have to go back to that miserable meeting room in the basement of Town Hall. Uh, ever, you know, we do hybrids, we'll get some nice fancy rooms someplace, so.
Tuberculosis in that room.
Yeah, 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 you you new guys have missed the re- missed a real treat, but you know, you can go there. I noticed they were pumping out the basement the other day, so I don't know what happened down there the other day.
Grease, there was grease that was let go of the elevator.
Oh.
They had to get the uh, Safe Harbor folks in.
Oh, God, what a mess. All right, um, if there's nothing else, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn at eight thirty eight.
Move.
You you really want to stick around, we can, we can shoot. Clark said it, all right, roll call, Clark.
Mark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
E glass Meyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Andrew Hobson, I.
Chris Plax, I.
All right, thank you all, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're out there.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
See you, we'll hope to see you Monday, all right, bye.